All right, good evening. I call this March 5th Sammamish Planning Commission meeting to order. We're here in the City Council chambers in Sammamish City Hall. And for the video, I want to point out that this evening, we have just the commission and staff here and no one else in the room with us. And we'll touch on that regarding public comment a bit later. But it is just the commissioners and the staff this evening. Okay? Let's start with roll call on my left.
Mark Lewis.
Mike Presko.
Mark Baughman.
Larry Crandall.
Josh Amato.
All right. And Vertuja is out of the country, I believe. And I know that we're also missing Karthik. So let's start with approval of the agenda. Before we do that, I want to make a change to the agenda as we're going to insert before public comment and after we approve the minutes from last time, a brief update from our interim city manager, Dave Rudet. So we'll have that inserted into the agenda. So is there anybody who has any comments on the agenda as modified in that way? Okay, we'll call that modified agenda approved. Next is approval of the minutes from the February 20th meeting. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, or questions about the minutes from the last meeting? All right, we'll call the minutes from the February 20th meeting approved by common consent. So, next is Dave. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to insert myself this evening into your meeting under a special circumstance. I've really put on my calendar this date and some of the other commission dates so I could come, say hello, introduce myself, and say thank you for what you do. And I don't want to be remiss. And so I do thank you for what you do. I understand the importance of the commission. And that's why in the actions that I've taken to put in this proclamation of an emergency, to make it very clear and have the support of the council, that the planning commission and the city council meetings are desperately needed to allow us a continuity of our current state of our government in light of the emergencies that are going on. So let me tell you a little bit about what is going on. I won't have to recap everything. I'm sure you're following in the news, the tragic deaths that have occurred, and the increasing volume of people who are being diagnosed with COVID-19 virus. In an effort to help slow the virus in this community and the general region, the King County Health Department has requested that agencies such as ourselves try to not have congregations of public meetings, forestall those, take actions to disperse our workgroups. And we're looking at teleworking, telecommuting for some of our workforce, canceling some public meetings, and like this one, allowing it to continue modifying how we conduct those by still allowing public input through written commentary and comments in an email-type format. We can't, we don't have the technology right now to take on verbal conversations or conference call-type meetings. But we want to have the public comment. It's important. It'll be entered into for the record. But right now, meetings such as this, I've restricted public access for the protection of our staff and yourselves, as well as protection of the public, to help slow this disease. Is it going to stop it? Not, not a bit. We're only seeing the tip of the iceberg, is what the experts tell us. And we are likely on the verge of a pandemic, and that's the way we are treating it. And you'll see more and more of that throughout the country. We don't want to overreact, but we need to react prudently. And that's what we're trying to do here. And that's why today, I issued a proclamation of emergency so that we can put in place rules and regulations that allow us to modify what is done normally in the normal workplace, or take such other actions of acquiring people, equipment, and material to help us thwart the impacts of handling such an emergency. It's, in some ways, it's not much different than a major ice storm, a major fire, a major earthquake, but it is different in many ways because it's slowly creeping upon us. We can't see it, we can't smell it, and you're reading commentary about, oh, well, two weeks ago, someone who was now diagnosed was here. But that leaves a lot of unknown of were they there yesterday, were they there two weeks ago? And so, how do we cope with that? So, I apologize for the inconvenience that this has for you, what it has for the public who is viewing, but we think these measures are necessary. And we wish to conform to what the professionals are recommending out there. And I think to not follow along with that would put us in a position of jeopardy and potentially being negligent, and we don't want to do that. So, again, apologies for the inconvenience, but thank you for being present. Thank you for allowing us to continue with the democratic process, moving the government ahead, and helping the council sort out these very important issues so that we can move forward in support of our community. Do I have any questions? Can I help you with anything? Our website has a lot of explanation on it, a lot of public messaging out today about what's going on, and sites to refer to. And so I say that for your benefit and for the benefit of the viewing public. Well, thank you very much. I'll let you continue with your important business, and it truly is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudet. And in light of that, I will say that normally at this point, we would have public comment. And at this point, it'll be public comment on non-agenda items. And I'll repeat myself later for the second part of the public comment on our agenda. I'll just say for those watching, or those who may watch the video later, you can make public comment relating to this evening's meeting, either on agenda or agenda items. Please send an email to jacquelinemontana@thecity. And her email address is J Montana, just like the state, at sammamish.us. No?
There's one more N-A at the end.
It looks like it to me. Okay, let me say it out. I've read over it 100 times. I never noticed that. Sorry, Jackie. Anyway, please use that email address, J Montana, with the A at the end, at sammamish.us, and she will collect any public comment that you'd like to make. Okay. Next is our new business this evening, which is a presentation on implementation strategies for the Urban Forest Management Plan.
Well, thank you. Is that on? Okay, great. Thank you. Kelly Hildy, Deputy Director of the Community Development Department. I am joined tonight by Evan Fisher, a management analyst. And we will be providing the commission with an update on the development of the Urban Forest Management Implementation Strategies. I will forewarn you, I am currently having some issues with allergies. So if I cough, I will do it in the appropriate manner. So please be patient. So tonight, we're going to start off our presentation with a brief overview of the Urban Forest Management Plan for our new commissioner, as well as updates to the goals and policies adopted by the city council this last fall. As you recall, you made your recommendation last summer. We had a joint meeting with council in October, and they adopted the plan in November. So we will provide more information on that tonight. This will be followed by an introduction to the implementation strategies and an overview of how they are intended to work. So what is the Urban Forest Management Plan? This will serve as a reminder to many of you, but a quick crash course for Mike here tonight. The UFMP, our Urban Forest Management Plan, is the city's policy guide for managing, enhancing, and growing trees in the city over the next 20 years. It is the first of its kind for the city and brings all urban forestry activities under one vision and set of policies. Staff with the help of Davie Resource Group, our consultant, worked with community and staff stakeholders to develop a shared vision of the urban forest and foster a sense of collaboration between the city and its residents to support the Urban Forest Management Plan. Lastly, the plan sets goals and objectives for accomplishing the city's urban forest vision, which is, "The Urban Forest Management Plan will serve as a guiding document for management of the urban forest in ways that balance our community responsibilities of environmental stewardship and the necessities of human endeavor." The UFMP's goals are set around three broad areas that work towards realizing that vision. These include urban forest sustainability, efficiency in municipal operations, and community collaboration and engagement. Staff started working on developing the UFMP in 2018. Early on, there was a focus on creating an inventory of the city's tree resources, research, and analysis, and engaging the community. All of that work led to setting the goals and objectives. Last fall, as I mentioned previously, the city council approved by resolution the adoption of the UFMP into the city's environment and conservation element of the comprehensive plan, and directed staff to begin work on the next phases of the process, implementation, and performance measures. So city council reviewed Planning Commission's recommended plan at a joint meeting last October and adopted the plan with a few minor changes to the proposed goals and policies. In general, city council proposed changes included addressing wildlife corridors and forest understory, managing information and data related to the health of our urban forest, working with partner agencies, developing incentive programs for property owners, and evaluating staff resources and training programs. Some really great additives to the plan, building off of Planning Commission's recommendation. I am not going to read each of these off individually. I will save you from that, but I will give an overview what those amendments were. And there were 10 in total. But I'm going to take a pause here. There we go. More specifically, proposed amendments include identifying wildlife corridors and connectivity to reduce forest fragmentation, address concerns about the quality and condition of vegetation in the forest understory, increase the amount of data and information the city collects, maintains, and makes publicly available about the overall health of our urban forest, increase tree buffers between neighborhoods. Also to address minor correction, which was our bad, we had a little typo, include partner agencies such as federal and local jurisdictions to assist with developing wildfire prevention plans, and address resource sharing between city departments and evaluating appropriate staffing levels to support the city's urban forest. Amendments eight and nine really address building inspections and code enforcement by establishing metrics to implement monitoring programs for inspections, enforcement and permitting, as well as staff and contractor training programs for construction site management practices, and incentivizing tree retention on private property. And lastly, city council updated the plan to include, "Develop an outreach program to assist property owners with replacing sick and dying trees." So now that we are all up to date in that, I believe, five-minute synopsis of the last three years, I am going to pass this on to Evan, who will provide you with an overview of the strategic implementation strategies, or as we like to refer to them, the SIP, and the work program ahead of us over the next few months.
Awesome. Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Planning Commission. Like Kelly said, now we shift gears to implementation and the Strategic Implementation Plan, or SIP. The SIP is staff's plan to realize the goals of the UFMP. Broadly, the implementation and performance measures phases will consist of actions for achieving objectives, the creation of annual work plans built from those actions, and a state of the urban forest reports, all of which I'll go over more in the next few slides and in more detail at our next meeting. Oops. Okay. So what is the SIP? The SIP is how we work towards achieving the UFMP's goals and objectives by making them actionable. It creates a framework to guide staff in developing biannual work plans that are built around actions outlined under each goal and objective. Work plans are biannual to align with the city's budget cycle, but as I will explain shortly, are flexible and can be changed at any time. The SIP allows for the creation of metrics and milestones which can be tracked and reported during the annual state of the urban forest report. As I mentioned a moment ago, staff will be developing biannual work plans. So what is a work plan? It's simply the plan that guides staff's work over a period of time. The benefit of work plans is they're non-binding, so they can be changed at any time as the city's priorities changed. Items can be added, amended, or removed quickly and easily with no need for full legislative review. They do not have to be codified or adopted in any official city planning documents. This gives staff and city council the flexibility to change work plans as needed to quickly respond to the city's urban forest needs. Staff work plans will be built up of implementation actions. As I discussed a few minutes ago, the UFMP's goals are supported by objectives. Those objectives are supported by implementation actions. An example of this can be seen on our slide. Here, we're looking at urban forest goal UA1, maintain overall canopy cover. Objective A, develop and adopt an overall canopy goal, is supported by the three implementation actions we see on the screen. The set of actions for each objective have been evaluated on three criteria: priority, estimated timeframe, and estimated investment. Priority is a recommendation of when staff should look to begin this work and when these actions should be included on work plans. Estimated timeframe is a loose estimation of how long tasks will take to complete. And investment is an estimation of the budgetary requirements to complete those actions. Like Yelp, estimated investment is rated by dollar signs, with low cost being a single dollar sign and high cost being three. The SIP also lists which departments will be participating to complete those actions.
Can I interrupt with one quick question?
Yeah.
The dollar signs, when you say less and more, what orders of magnitude are we talking about here? Do you have a thought on what each one of those mean?
Yes, that will actually, we'll go over that at the next meeting, showing those parameters, for sure.
Can I, sorry, can I also ask? Is the dollars representative of staff time? Is that what that kind of means? Or is there a separate evaluation of staff time?
Yes, it will include staff time. It will be inclusive.
Thanks.
Great. Moving on. So the draft actions have been created in collaboration with our consultant, Ian Scott, who many of you remember from Davie Resource Group, and have incorporated feedback and suggested implementation actions given by city council, planning commission, staff stakeholder groups, and public comment. During the development of the UFMP, we received a lot of great suggestions from the public on potential implementation actions, which we were careful to track so they could be included and reflected and incorporated during this part of the project. This slide gives you a sense of how, year over year, the work plans, in conjunction with the State of the Urban Forest Report, will continually evolve based on the progress made in the years prior. The State of the Urban Forest Report is meant to act as a yearly progress report, tracking what work has been accomplished in the work plan, what is left to do, and will provide recommendations on what should be done in the next program. The yearly cycle will mean the SIP is constantly evolving to meet the city's urban forest priorities and needs. To get the ball rolling, staff will be proposing a 2020 work plan that begins building the necessary foundation to continue working towards the UFMP's long-term goals. Staff will go over this get-the-ball-rolling work plan at our next meeting, but it will be designed using implementation actions staff can fit into our existing 2020 work program, and that will require no additional budgetary expenditures. From there, staff will be presenting a proposed 21 and 22 work plan and asking Planning Commission to provide input on what priorities they'd like staff to focus on. These priorities will help shape the 21-22 budget discussion and help determine how money is allocated to urban forestry in the upcoming budget cycle. Again, the beauty of the SIP focusing on biannual work plans is they can change very quickly to respond to the city's needs. For example, let's say in the middle of 2021, the city falls victim to the maple beetle, which I made up, and needs to respond quickly and shift its urban forest priorities to counter the maple beetle threat and to protect our trees. At just the direction of city council, staff can shift its 2021 work plan towards actions that would help fight the beetle. At the end of 2021, the State of the Urban Forest Report, staff would report on the work done to fight the maple beetle, what progress has been made, and what's left to do. This information would then shape what would be on the work plan in 2022. The next steps for the SIP are to come back to Planning Commission on April 2nd for a work session where we will ask for your feedback on the SIP and ask what Planning Commission's priorities are for the 21-22 work plan. We have scheduled a public hearing with the Planning Commission on May 7th, where we will ask for PC's recommendation on approving staff's proposed 2020 and 21-22 work plans. We will then be going to city council early summer, where we hope they will adopt on consent a resolution supporting the urban forest work plans. And with that, thank you. And any questions?
Go ahead. I'm still thinking mine out. One of the things that I recall, we talked about a lot when we developed this, we kind of tabled or parking lot a lot of ideas, and I'm presuming a lot of those come into here, plus a lot of other sources of information. What I'm curious about is how, this isn't really a question for now, it's a suggestion to think about, I guess. I think this topic, what we learned before, and even what I see here, suggests a very broad range of possible ideas, particularly because there's so much passion from certain people within the community about it. And I would just encourage that we really think carefully about how to utilize our time effectively to narrow that down into something that's actually going to create actions for both staff and others that are going to be involved. Because I have a feeling, even just looking at the little bits of public comment we've gotten so far, and from what I recall from the first pass-through when we developed the outline of the plan, there's going to be a lot of people potentially with a lot of input, and we need to have some parameters, I think, around not allowing things to grow out of control. We need a plan that we can actually do something with, and that should be our goal. So I just encourage that we have a good, you know, some guidelines, some goal-setting or definition, something like that, to help us collectively keep this inside the bumpers. That was my suggestion.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. What you can expect from staff for the 2020 work program is very little. One, because our budget for 2020 really was to develop the SIP. But we do have limited staff capacity, start setting the framework for establishing an urban forest management program with the understanding that it is not going to be supported by a budget outside of what our staff has capacity to take on, if that makes sense. But we are in the process in this year of looking at our budget for 21 and 22. That process will start happening here soon with our city council, our finance department, as well as our city manager's department. And that if we, you know, we'll provide some recommendations of what that looks like with sensitivities, that our city council wants to see a sustainable, balanced budget. So working within those fence posts, that would allow staff, the remaining of this year, to start really digging deep into what those costs would look like, so that we could propose that with the budget process for the 21-22 work program. So when we come back on April 2nd, we can provide a draft of what that looks like, and then have that conversation with the Planning Commission, allow the Planning Commission to ask questions about, well, if we don't do this, what about this? But we will, again, try to stay within those fence posts, knowing that we do have a council that is very interested in a very sustained, sustainable, balanced budget for 21-22. So we do really need to establish a program. That's the first priority. Without an established program, we won't be able to achieve a lot. It won't be organized and managed efficiently.
I really appreciate your use of fence posts and digging deep since we are talking about the Urban Forest Management Plan.
That's right.
Larry, go ahead.
If staff would like, I'll try to summarize what I'm about to say and put it in writing and get it to you. But the last item on those agendas about educating the community on sick trees brings some of us back to about, I guess, it's argumentative, but five or six years ago when we first started looking at this. I believe that I brought to either the meeting or some of the people, some of the work they were doing in Lewis and Clark County or Aberdeen area, and I think it was WSU, I'm doing this from memory, so I will try to do the research. And what they were doing was actually creating civic methods to do something with the, not only the understory that was taken out, but the trees themselves. And at the Flower and Garden Show, Northwest Flower and Garden Show last week, they were talking about a similar thing of using, maybe not diseased trees, but trees that had fallen down, they were in good shape, cut those off, and you can make benches, you can make tables, you can do a lot of things with them. So I think providing the public with the education and also a program, which leads me to something that is, anybody ever worked in a sawmill that's in this room right now? Okay.
Josh just looks like he has.
We all dress apart, and I've, you know, I've never been a, what is it, a major D or something. But I have worked in a sawmill. And one of the things that, somehow, a couple of weeks ago, I was reminiscing about my work, I worked about five years when I was in high school, in college, in sawmills, in a variety of chores. They were chores then. If you ever pulled on the green chain or turned a cant with either a PV or a cant, the PV has a point on the end of it. This is, again, memory. But maybe the historical society can really look into creating a, we're not going to use the same kind of fuel they did in those days to drive the sawmills, but maybe a way that people can take their, to a local sawmill and have their trees, the people might come out and buck, that's what they call them, down those movable logs right in the backyard there, et cetera. So just an idea, and I'll try to type that up. Okay, thank you for indulging.
I'm looking up a bunch of those words on Google right now, Larry. Anyone else have comments about the presentation? Oh, Josh, go ahead.
I think I do. This might be the right time, or the wrong time. I don't, we'll find out. There's a lot of items in the UFMP to get implementation strategies for, and a lot of times, I think, we inundate the public with too much information at once. People have, you know, 30 seconds, five minutes of time to devote to things that aren't outside of their real immediate interests. Is there a way, and this is asking a lot, I think, of the communications team, but to put the UFMP into bite-sized pieces and then get feedback on each, like, small portion of it? Because if someone has just a small piece to think about, rather than trying to think they have to read, I don't know, what is this, 60,000 words or something, in order to contribute? It's just my thought is... more people in the city who might have some good ideas if they only had the time to be involved. So that's just my comment or question there.
Yeah. So, do you want to address it, or?
Well, yeah, I sort of have a thought on how you were talking about implementation actions and how we already have, I don't know how many goals and objectives for each of those, and then now actions for each of those. The nice thing is Davy Resource Group is helping us sort of understand through that criteria of which years some of this will be handled. So I think that is a nice way to sort of have a limiting factor, and the 2020 options will be pretty limited because of the restrictions Kelly described, so that might be a way to sort of limit what we get feedback on each year is using Davy to recommend when we should be thinking about these things.
Yeah, and I'll add to that, too. And we're looking at '21 and '22. It may seem like a lot of time, but when we're establishing a program, the questions that we need to ask ourselves is, who's staffing it? Does that require an additional staff person? That's a budget cycle question and an approval. If it's not approved, then with current staff and resources, we really do start to limit our ability to address larger projects or more projects to the list in the next two years. So we need to be very strategic on what that looks like. Again, we want to have some wins, some low-hanging fruit that we can address, that addresses all of the, one of the three, or all of, an example of, sorry, I should probably start over on that, actions that are under each of those broad buckets of the goals. And so, and again, some of those higher priorities, but again, working within, we only have two years, we have a staff, and unless we get really significant resources approved in the budget, again, it's going to, you know, we'll be leaning on our consultant to kind of start with that list. And then every year that we come back to council and say, hey, this first year you asked us to focus on three things, we did, and this was the outcome. In '21, you asked us to focus on two items, this is the outcome, what do you want, you know, is the plan for '22 still achievable? And then come back in '22, do that work and report on it. It's a big to-do list. If you look at all of those objectives and the actions that fall under them, and again, we're in those early implementation years for the next two and a half years to get the program established.
So I apologize if I'm completely off-base. I was under the impression that we had objectives, but we didn't necessarily have the how of completing the objectives?
Yes.
Okay. So with what Planning Commission is, what we need to do is what, I guess? If we're having the consultant prioritize based on what they know from their experiences achievable, given our parameters?
Yeah.
What are, what's our directive, then? I guess I'm not sure I fully comprehend.
Yeah, so I would say the direction of the Planning Commission is to look at those recommendations. Did we miss the mark? When we do present that, those items, we're going to identify those that were heard during the development of the UFMP. If you remember back last summer, we actually started keeping a matrix of those items that identified as implementation actions, and we started highlighting them, that we actually note, these were provided through community feedback, our Planning Commission, our city council. And what we want from Planning Commission is, knowing that we have these fenceposts, and these are our limitations, is what we are, what we're bringing forth for your review and recommendation to the city council, does that appropriately reflect what we've heard through the development of the UFMP and the public comment that you'll receive starting tonight and as we go through this process, April 2nd and the May 7th date of the public hearing and recommendation to city council?
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
I think so. I might be losing it between the objectives and the implementation, the actual things that we're doing to reach the objectives, which are not necessarily identified as being identified, I guess.
Yeah, you'll see those next week, or, sorry, on the 2nd, not next week, April 2nd. We'll bring those to you. But we will be focusing on, again, what we can do in the next two and a half years.
Okay, so you're not looking necessarily for public input on how to achieve those actions. You've got, you guys, you're working on that on the backend, you'll bring it to us, we'll prioritize.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I would maybe just add a bit to that in that I think, if it's Ian and Davy helping with some of that, to make sure that they're also, which I think they would, but looking at what we can get, bang for the buck is maybe the simplest way to say it. So there may be 10 things that are very achievable, and they all have $1 sign associated with them, but if they don't really actually, in terms of the outcome, do very much, I think certainly we will look at it that way.
Yes.
And so an encouragement would be to also make sure that anyone who's participating in creating those suggested priorities or groupings or whatever, not just consider, you know, what's easy, what can be done, what's low-cost, but also consider what actually will have an impact in the community, because that's what most people want.
Exactly.
And just to add to that, Mark, Ian is also helping to identify, as sort of additional criteria that I forgot to cover, actions that have opportunities for grant funding and partnership with other organizations, which goes to the bang for the buck idea, just as a note.
Yep.
Okay. Mike?
Actually, I'd just build on that. What we see on April 2nd, would that show some of those trade-offs, or would that show, basically, their priorities? Because I do think it would be helpful to see some of the thinking that would lead to the priorities, including additional fenceposts and opportunities to get identified. I think that would be very helpful.
Yes, we can definitely do that.
And then just sort of a follow-up, I think that, I understand the budget constraints, but sometimes, maybe not for this year, but for next year, you say, oh, if we had, you know, a little bit more budget, we could accomplish, you know, these additional things and get input from the community on whether that was important or not and worth the, you know, the ask from a budget standpoint.
I absolutely agree. And in no way should my statement on a sustainable and balanced budget deter any consideration of actions that are a priority for the community and the Planning Commission to move forward to city council. Our city council would like to hear that and consider it. Again, we just, we can't ask for the world. We need to, we need to make sure that what we do move forward to city council is achievable and that, that, again, it's establishing the urban forest management program. That does not exist today, and there are an order of events that we do have to get moving on to ensure that we have a successful program in the future, so. And it will be easier when we can actually go through that process and show you what those are, and then to get your feedback. And again, what we'll do is after April 2nd, we'll take that feedback and come back to address that before the public hearing on the 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would agree that we should have goals, and we should also have stretch goals that we can ask for a bit more, to maybe get a little bit more.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I agree.
Mark?
Is there going to be an understanding of, an assessment of where we're at already, down to the types of trees, species, all that kind of thing, as part of the foundation?
So that assessment currently exists. It's on our website under Urban Forest Management Plan. If you recall, that was the iMAP, Story Map, sorry, Story Map, where we looked at our tree canopy, its health, its makeup of deciduous versus coniferous, forest fragmentation, all of that information. Now, the next level would be a tree survey, where you're actually surveying trees on the ground, specific trees, and we, in inventory, and we don't have that information. That is, some of that we have with parks, projects that have gone under construction. Some of those projects have tree surveys. They exist throughout the city, but to do a whole tree survey or inventory would require, that's a specific action that requires funding and resources to do.
But that's not going to be a part of?
No, I don't believe that was actually an objective that was adopted by city council this last fall, to get to that level of specificity as an action of this plan.
Okay, so I would make a suggestion that, and I don't know if there are any trees of this, you know, of this significance in Samamish, and I've been on a lot of the trails, but I just don't know. But there might be some very significant trees of either age or type that we would want to identify in order to, you know, be careful to watch and protect and to save. I would just suggest that if that's something that we could do, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, we can look at where that would fall under an adopted objective, and we can put that action as a suggestion to be considered.
Anyone else? Comments or questions? All right. Excuse me. Thank you. Don't worry, it's just a cough, allergies. All right, normally, we would have public comment on this topic, so once again, I'll just state the email address for Jaclyn Montana, J-M-O-N-T-A-N-A-N-A at samamish.us. If you have any public comments that you'd like to submit, send them to Jackie, and she will distribute those to the Planning Commission. All right. Anything else for this evening?
Not from staff.
Maybe I'll mention, since we have a moment here, I'll mention a couple of upcoming things. So those of you who are stuck at home and can't come join us for the lovely Planning Commission meetings, you can think about the future. On March 19th, we will have a work session on a specific floodplain ordinance update. On April 2nd, we'll have a couple things, a site-specific land use amendment being discussed, and more work, as was mentioned, on this particular topic, the Urban Forest Management Plan implementation strategies. And April 23rd, we'll have a public hearing on the floodplain ordinance, and then some more work session time on the Phase 2 development regulations. So I know everyone's super excited to be here for all of those topics and make public comments, so I would certainly invite everyone to participate. Okay. I think that's it for this evening, and unless anyone has anything else, we could use a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.